9th, 2026. I'm glad everybody's here. We've got a beautiful crowd here tonight. We're a great night. And as our custom, if you silence your cell phones, we're going to have a moment of silence. And then Ms. Hatchell is going to lead us in our place to allegiance. So we can all stand, please. Amen?
United Nations, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to make everybody aware, Mr. Davault is not going to be with us tonight. He's under the weather, so keep him in your thoughts. Counsel, we have an adoption of an agenda here, please. I have a need a motion.
Move for approval, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Second. Ms. Hatchell, all in favor, please raise your hand. All right, now we are moving on with the ceremony. I think Mr. Chief Wyankoff has this going for us here, I believe.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We'd like to take the opportunity tonight, as we've done in the past, as we said at our reception we held just a few minutes ago. It's always an honor for us as a department, as a city, to recognize new employees. As you know, our recruits spend sometimes months in classes preparing to get through that probationary period to where they can actually serve as a firefighter. So we're happy to recognize tonight one of those that has recently completed his probationary training and is now a full-time firefighter with the city of Kannapolis. So Sammy Webster, he comes from us, from a neighboring department. He's been with us. He actually completed his training toward the end of the year. Has done very well. He's really found his place with us. Great guy, very well-liked so far as his couple of weeks he's been here. So a couple of weeks down and 25 years to go. So we appreciate you being here and coming and joining us. And we want to congratulate you. So with that, I'm going to ask his dad to do the official penning for him.
All right, we now have a proclamation by history month. Ms. Berry is going to handle this one for us.
Whereas Black History Month is observed annually in February to recognize and celebrate the rich history, culture, and enduring contributions of African-Americans to the United States and the world. And whereas African-Americans have played a vital role in shaping our nation's history through leadership, innovation, creativity, resilience, and sacrifice, despite enduring centuries of enslavement, segregation, discrimination, and systemic injustice. And whereas the achievement of African-Americans in fields including education, science, medicine, government, arts, business, athletics, and civil rights continue to strengthen and enrich our communities. And whereas Black History Month provides an opportunity for all people to deepen their understanding of the historical and contemporary experiences of African-Americans, to honor those whose efforts advanced freedom and equality, and to reflect on the ongoing pursuit of justice and equity. And whereas acknowledging Black History is essential to fostering unity, mutual respect, and a more inclusive future for generations to come. Now therefore, the City Council of the city of Kannapolis, North Carolina, does hereby proclaim the month of February as Black History Month and encourage all residents, students, employees, and community members to observe this month through education, reflection, dialogue, and participation in activities that honor the legacy and contributions of African-Americans. And witness thereof, on behalf of Mayor George Douglas Wilson and the entire Kannapolis City Council, have caused the great seal of the city of Kannapolis to be affixed this 9th day of February, 2026. This is the proclamation. It will be on display in the atrium of City Hall for the rest of the month of February. And we wish you all a happy Black History Month. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Berry. Now we have the speakers from the floor. I'll turn this over to Ms. Gags.
Good evening. Just a reminder, if you'd like to speak tonight, you will need to sit out. I have my two cars on the back table beside the service doors. I have two cars currently. And you will be given four minutes to speak. The first person I have is Amos McClory.
Good evening. Amos McClory, state representative for the North Carolina NAACP. Want to address something that's about to happen later on in this program or this meeting, just to make sure that I'm clear on what's about to happen or may not happen. I understand that MLK Boulevard, that was my baby from start to end where it's at. And in our presentation to the city almost five years ago, we included that entire street from downtown to the African-American community. Just want to make sure that you guys on City Council present this. Once it's presented to you, you present it to the state. And the state either agrees or rejects it. In this case, the state did agree to make that MLK Boulevard. And we certainly appreciate that here. And it showed to us that Kannapolis was one of the first, not one of, the first city to show in Cabarrus County that you are a progressive city council. Now, moving forward, my grandfathers and great-grandfathers came over on the slave ships. Couldn't speak English, but they learned something. After that, 100 years after that, another 100 years of Jim Crow. Jim Crow means rules, not laws. That somebody just make a rule and it's done and everybody else just shut up, coming from the African-American community. After 1965, we started to get a little bit of foot to say, yes, we want to vote. Yes, we want to have a voice in our communities. In some cities, that's okay. But in some cities, it's not. We just want to know what kind of city council we're dealing with, at least I do, before I move any further with what I'm about to say. We had the bridge name. We had the city, the street name. And a couple of months ago, we came up with somebody gave a proposal to name it after a House of Representatives person in less than four years. Now, we're going to put another name on that bridge. Just want to know, are we going to stick with what you say? Or are you going to be a chameleon city council, change something every four years? That's all I want to say.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker I have is Phil Goodman.
Phil Goodman, 1005 Central Drive in Kannapolis. I've been attending the council meetings pretty regularly since about 2017. And for anyone sitting behind me that hasn't been to many of them, you don't have any idea what kind of treat it is to be looking here at eight people that I attended a retreat on Saturday all day long. There was agreement, there was disagreement, there was opinions. And I am so proud of this group of people. For the first time since I've been coming, there was disagreement, but yet, understanding and cooperation. The attitude was, this is my opinion, but I'm going to go with the crowd. Whatever the vote says, that's what I'm going to do. And there were some, you guys did a phenomenal job in there. There was a lot of discussion, a lot of hardcore discussion, a lot of variations of the different topics. And I just want to say, if this continues this way, I said it before you, or I think the night that you were voted in or sworn in. If this continues, I think some of the brightest days in the history of Kannapolis lay ahead of us. For the two new folks that we've got, Isaiah and Naomi, I'm going to tell you, you guys were star performers there, if you want to call it that. You did terrific. Everybody else spoke their piece, had what they, said what they wanted to say. I was sitting in the back saying, am I really seeing what I'm seeing and hearing what I'm hearing? A lot of good discussion and picking someone else out. The mayor did an incredible job of not taking control of the meeting, allowing the other six people to speak, letting Wilmer speak. And he put in his opinions of things, but it was not dominated by the mayor. And so for anybody hearing my voice, I'm telling you, we're in for some good days ahead in the city of Kannapolis. And I do believe there will be fairness, irregardless of color, irregardless of political standards. I think there will be fairness all the way. And I sincerely appreciate you guys. And I will continue to pray for you and support you in any way I can.
Thank you, sir.
Every man has a place in as hard as a space. And the world can't erase his fantasies. Take a ride in the sky on a ship, fantasize. Earth, Wind &amp; Fire wrote this song. It was called Fantasy. It's been my dream. And I heard a couple of months ago, Valeria came to me, she called me one night. She told me that Ms. Corinne Cannon, there was a possibility of doing something for Ms. Corinne Cannon. Ms. Corinne Cannon, my grandfather, married her sister. And so when you talk about Corinne Cannon, you're talking about a jewel. I've worked with Darrell Jackson for at least 20 years. Diane Berry was a big treasure when raised $35,000 or $40,000 at Carverville Middle School. I worked with Doug, known Doug for nearly 40 years. Wilmer, known him all of his life. Worked with Ms. Mitchell. I worked with her husband at Jackson Training School. I'm here to tell you that it's not about us today. It's all about that 106-year-old woman by the name of Corinne Cannon. So it's, and my, we met. Mr. Amos McClure, Mr. Doug Wilson, and our city manager. And we came up with an agreement of what we would do. And it was my understanding when we left that meeting that we would be on one mind and one accord of what we were trying to do. If any misunderstanding has come other than that, I don't understand that. Because it's all about that 106-year-old woman sitting right there. And so as I stand here today, as I stand here today, I want to thank you for the consideration of that bridge. Martin Luther King did a good job, great job of what he's done. But I want to thank you for consideration of naming that bridge after Ms. Corinne Lidle Cannon, naming the bridge, and also the roundabout that we talked about. Few days ago, Mr. Amos McClure, I called him on Friday. And we had this opportunity to talk. And we went to see Ms. Corinne. And we hugged and we kissed and listened to her tell her story. Ms. Corinne, we walked out of there. I was so happy. We put this on Facebook. And as of now, we've had 10,875 people to see that on Facebook. So that tells me that this woman right here, this woman of God, is worthy of anything that the city could consider doing for Ms. Corinne Lidle Cannon. And I want to say thank you on behalf of the community here. We say thank you for what you're about to do for Ms. Cannon. Can she speak? Can Ms. Corinne speak? Is that possible?
She's welcome to come up and speak. There is a resolution of closing the meeting. If she can wait until...
Yeah, we're going to give her a chance to speak.
I have one more card, Ms. Valeria.
Hello, and thank you. Thank you to the city council and to community. I just wanted to start with saying that when Amos McClory and Pastor Gray and I were working on this project for Ms. Corinne Cannon, who was one of the first people that we met when we moved here to this area, we had faith that what we were doing was going to come to fruition. And I'm so happy to know that that is going to be happening today. And in light of that, I wanted to mention, and she doesn't know this, but when I was visiting with Ms. Betty Austin, look at her looking over here. When I was visiting with her and told her that I was coming up here for this, she said she wanted to be here to visit with her friend. So I wanted to let you all know that you also have someone else here in the room who was the first African-American elected to the Cabarrus County Board of Education. And here on this Black History Month, I wanted to just bring that up. She was a, she is a retired educator from Concord, North Carolina, honored with induction into the Kannapolis African-American Museum and Cultural Center, KMAC is how we all know it, Hall of Fame in October 2021. She was recognized for her lifetime achievement and for being the first African-American to serve on the Cabarrus County Board of Education. And she is here as a retired educator to support her friend, Ms. Corinne Cannon. So if everyone could give her a round of applause as well. So I'd like to say thank you for the time and for the community coming out to make sure that we are all giving literally her her flowers, Ms. Cannon, with this roundabout where the garden will be. I also want to mention, here we are in Black History Month. I am a bit disturbed that Ms. Jean Dixon, who is city council member, received more votes than the mayor, more votes than any member of this city council during the last election, yet she was not made to be the mayor pro tem. Now, I know that is something that you all vote and decide on. But historically, the person who receives the most votes would be the mayor pro tem. And it is very disturbing in being in Black History Month, and this city council member was not voted on as mayor pro tem. Not only was she not voted on, she was not even allowed to speak. So I do want to mention that and how the community is very upset with that. And we will continue to support you, Ms. Jean Dixon. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. I do not have any additional cards. So with that, we will close out that.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, we have a consent agenda here that we need a motion to adopt.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I would just like to ask that under minutes, October 13, 2025, closed session, and October 27, closed session, that the consent agenda be amended to exclude reference to those two minutes.
All right, is that a motion? It is, right?
Yes.
Do I have a second for that? She wants to amend the agenda since we're not, the amendments that are listed here are not actually there. You get a second for that? Okay. Mr. Payne with a second. All in favor, if you'll raise your hand, please? Okay, thank you. Now can we get a motion to go in and adopt it as revised? Mr. Payne, second. Ms. Hatchell, all in favor? Okay, thank you. All right, we're moving on to the business agenda. Item A, Richard, you want to go ahead and address this? Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. We did have on your agenda tonight a public hearing for voluntary annexation for 6304, 6320, Mooresville Road, and 6165, Pagemont Road. We did have a public hearing scheduled for this, but up until 4 o'clock today. And then the applicants notified us they wanted this item pulled from the agenda until the new property owner takes ownership of this property. So we don't require any action by council. And just, we'll have a hearing at a later date once they make reapplication for this particular annexation. So. So with that, I'll move to your next item on the agenda. Let's skip down through here. All right, so we have a request for voluntary annexation at 3050 Placid Road. This is on behalf of an estate. There's the applicant's names. There you see it before you. It is one existing parcel. It will be split, subdivided at a later date between those family members there. It's approximately 4.03 acres. It's in our non-contiguous annexation area of the city, but it is in our future growth area. It's adjacent to Waterford at the Rocky River subdivision. So this kind of gives you an idea where the location is off of Shiloh Church Road in that area, the county line being on the left side of the screen there on that map. And you see Highway 73 at the bottom there. This is the annexation survey. It kind of gives you a better description close in of the property there. And with that, Mayor, I'll be glad to answer any questions you have either before or after the public hearing is held on this particular item.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Smith?
I do, I have just a few for you, Mr. Smith. I know we discussed this a little bit before, but I want to make sure that the listening audience has a clear understanding of this.
Sure, sure.
So just a couple of things. Of course, we know this was voluntary.
Yes, ma'am.
Annexes cannot be involuntary.
That's correct.
Where this is located at, once it is an annex, what would be the zoning out there?
So the zoning will typically match what's in the nearby area. It's R8 out in that particular area. Based on the density they're doing, they could actually even do it as low as R4 if they wanted to. So it really depends on what subdivision they come back with. But the planning commission will assign the zoning once the annexation takes effect.
And then they would have to come back for the sewer allocation, is that correct?
For, they would have to come back for, to staff for the allocation, yes, ma'am.
For the staff?
Yeah, and they would actually, the utilities would actually come from Waterford. There's an actual easement that connects to this property through Waterford subdivision. So the utilities are nearby.
Okay. And there, this is, like you said, it was just that one parcel. They're not looking to put a subdivision or something in this area?
That's, that's great. They're going to split it between family members so they'd build individual houses on it. But my understanding is four, maybe five lots at the most.
And with any annexation, of course, the police and the fire are aware, especially since this is one way out there by Shiloh Road in that area.
Yes, ma'am, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Do we have any other questions, counsel? Okay, with that, we're going to open the public hearing. If you want to come and speak on this topic, please let us know now. All right, seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. Counsel, we need a motion to adopt this annexation.
Move to adopt.
Ms. Dixon?
Second.
Ms. Berry, all in favor? Raise your hands, please. All right, okay, Mr. Smith?
Next item we have before you is another voluntary annexation. This is at 5963 Yell Avenue. It's in the Fisher Town area. The applicant is Cynthia Alexander. She just wants to actually build one single-family residence there, and she wanted city services for the site. The property is less than a quarter of an acre, as you see there. It's non-contiguous annexation, and it is located in the future growth area of the city. Again, this gives you an idea of proximity. Go north on Charlie Walker Road off of Highway 3. And it's in the area of Bridgeport Drive and Princeton Avenue right off of Yell Avenue there. So this kind of gives you a close-up of that property off of Yell. And then again, I'll be glad to answer questions before or after the public hearing on that.
Counsel, anyone have questions on this one? Questions, okay. We're going to open the public hearing. Anyone would like to speak on this topic, please come forward. Not a mad rush. Okay, we're going to close this one. And we need another motion to approve this one. Mr. Payne and Ms. Dixon, you got the second, okay? All in favor? All right, thank you. Okay, now we move on to the item of the night, the resolution here for Ms. Cannon. Mr. Smith, you going to do this one?
Yes, sir. Not a public hearing here. We just need you to adopt a resolution based on your January 12 meeting when you asked staff to actually begin the process for renaming the bridge that crosses Cannon Boulevard, Highway 29. It will, it'll be the new bridge on Martin Luther King Avenue. The bridge that was determined previously by city council was the example you see there in the picture. It's a church glass window bridge. The project's one that's funded by DOT. The city contributed funding for the upfit, if you will, of the bridge there. And it kind of gives you an idea of the location of that. For clarification on comments made earlier, though, the bridge itself, it would be a memorial bridge. Martin Luther King Avenue, the name will still stay intact there. But there would be a memorial bridge. It would be named for Ms. Cannon's sake there. So you have in your packet the resolution requesting consideration of naming this to the Corinne L. Cannon Bridge. Once you adopt a resolution, if you so see fit, then we would actually take that to North Carolina Department of Transportation for them to consider. They would consider it when the bridge is closer to completion at that project. So be glad to answer any questions you have on that.
Anyone have any questions here? Okay. At this point, I guess we need to call for a motion for this resolution. Ms. Dixon is ready, and she has the motion. Mr. Payne, the second. All in favor? All right, that passes. We're going to go ahead and do our thing now?
Ms. Gags, I'm going to ask you to read that since I've got this call.
Sure.
You go ahead and read.
This resolution states, "Resolution requesting consideration of the naming of the new Martin Luther King Junior Avenue Bridge as the Corinne L. Cannon Bridge. Whereas Mrs. Corinne Lidle Cannon was born in 1919, near the border of Cabarrus and Mecklenburg Counties, daughter of the late Emanuel and Rosa Lidle, graduating from Logan High School in Concord. And whereas, Mrs. Cannon has served in numerous capacities throughout her life, including as a devoted wife and mother, whose heritage includes seven children, 21 grandchildren, 28 great-grandchildren, and 10 great-great-grandchildren. Community leader and an active participant in social, political, economic, and religious life. And whereas, Mrs. Cannon is an active member and a great supporter and member of the Presbyterian Church, becoming a charter member of Covenant United Presbyterian Church in Kannapolis in 1958. And whereas, Mrs. Cannon has served in various roles... And whereas, Mrs. Cannon has served in various roles for the Presbyterian, culminating in her role as a delegate to the Presbyterian Women's National Meeting at Purdue University. And whereas, Mrs. Cannon's professional life has been equally diverse, starting as a salesperson in her youth and continuing until this day, including numerous awards through these services. And whereas, Mrs. Cannon made history as the first African-American woman employed in the production process at Cannon Mills in 1963, where her state, trailblazing achievement opened doors for thousands of women of color in the textile industry. And whereas, Mrs. Cannon has also been deeply engaged in civic and political life, becoming associated with the NAACP 95 years ago, serving as a member of the Kannapolis Historical Club, and becoming a charter member and former president of the Fisher Town Princeton Park Community Organization. And whereas, the city of Kannapolis would like to continue to honor Mrs. Cannon well into the future, and now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of Kannapolis, North Carolina, requests that the North Carolina Department of Transportation consider naming the new Martin Luther King Jr. Avenue Bridge as the Corinne L. Cannon Bridge, adopted this ninth day of February 2026."
Everybody, particularly the commissioners and the mayor of Kannapolis, I have been here for a long time. I guess you would think about that, wouldn't you? But I have come over those bridges, I've been walking over those bridges many years. I remember I was reading an article recently in 1884, there was an engineer who was very much worried and upset about not having a bridge over the Niagara Falls in New York. And he wondered how it was going to do, but he started by little things. You know, you start by little things, and you'd be surprised what big things will be. I came over the bridges in Kannapolis with the Civil Rights Movement, with all of the miscreants that you would think about, jealousy, injustice, and all those other mean things. I don't have to liberate them, you know what I came over. I've been on God's road a long time, and you don't know where the new road and the new bridge is going to take you. So this is a word for the mind is to think about, where are we going from here? Where are we going from here? This being the first of the February, when we think about people of color in the month of February, after that, we forget it. Let's keep on going. We don't know where we're going. Think about how many of the people are traveling over the bridge now today after 1884 in New York, at the falls. Those bridges take you a long way, but don't try to go by yourself. You remember when the people walking along there that morning with Jesus, and they didn't know he was with them, but he was, they were blessed. They were blessed when they found out the Lord was right here with us. We're all born for a purpose. I have no idea why I'm still here. Most of my associates are all gone. I'm so glad to see Billy Austin today. She, we started out a long time ago. She was our musician when we first started our church, back in the 50s and all, and she's here today. It would take me more than a minute, more than an hour to say thank you, so I'm just going to cut it short. I've been traveling on this road a long time. I've been traveling on the road a long time. If you want to know the story, come visit me sometime at the, at the Landing of Cabarrus. The Landing of Cabarrus is just up the road there, please. I'd be loved, I'd love to see you there. So I thank you, I thank you, Mayor, I thank you. I was with the first mayor, I was in the meeting for, we had the first mayor of Kannapolis. I was with him after he passed. I've been in Kannapolis now. I married on Saturday night, Saturday evening, and came over here 1930, when was it? About eighty-seven years ago? I've been in the area, and I'm going to be included in Kannapolis. That's another thing I'm proud about. So y'all, when you get ready to vote, vote, think about me.
I will.
Thank, thank you, thank you.
Let me say one thing before we go. We all have a lot of blessings in our life, right? This lady is a blessing in all of our lives. She really is, and we really need to be thankful for her. God bless you, ma'am. Ms. Berry and Mr. Jackson and myself have been on this council now for going on 13 years, and that is the greatest moment that we've ever had. Absolutely. Give her another hand. Are we moving on now to Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. What we have before you today is a update on our water and sewer master plan and CIP. And so I'd like to start today just by saying, sorry about that, let's back that up just a smidgen. What is a CIP? So a CIP is a multi-year planning document that outlines, prioritizes, and funds our major initiatives and projects. Those are going to include everything from pump station upfits to water and sewer main replacements, as well as treatment plant improvements. And some of those improvements could be just due to age of material or the age of the asset, but it could also be expansion of treatment capacity, both water and or wastewater. So what is our plan based on? So the plan that we, staff, are going to present to you as part of our budget retreats and as part of our, our budget packages over the next few months, the primary document that leads our CIP and our master plan is going to be the city's land use plan. That land use plan lays out our growth projections, as well as the growth areas and annexation areas for the city. And we then take those projections and add water and wastewater capacity calculations to them. So if we plan to grow the city X, then we know there's going to be, there's going to be the need for more water, more sewer over time. And so the primary, the primary item that we're going to look at on top of population projection is also age of our assets that we, the city, own. And we all know the older something gets, the more leaky it gets. So the older a water pipe gets, in 20 years, the chances of it leaking are going to increase in the future. Same thing with sewer. Sewer is to keep groundwater out and sewer in. Over time, groundwater will start to penetrate in some of the cracks and the degradation that occurs over decades. And so we got, we've got four primary things that we look at as well. We have land supply, so that's basically what land is around us, what raw land is available here in the city or just outside, what properties do we have that are currently underutilized that could be redeveloped in the future by private investment. And then we look at our future land use plan that helps guide that. We look at suitability, and then, of course, the ultimate growth forecast. So, and then why do we need a CIP? Well, our master plan and our CIP are going to help us, staff, lay out a long-term water and wastewater capacity need, and also help us with our rehabilitation and maintenance programs that will be part of our budgeting process over the next 20 to 25 years. So what's included in this presentation and what you'll see at the upcoming budget retreat? You'll see routine repair and maintenance of pipelines, pump stations, and the treatment plant. You'll also see plans to address limited water and wastewater capacity. You'll also see conveyance restriction improvement projects. And then, of course, we'll have a 20-year CIP, as well as our master plan will be focused on a 25-year planning horizon. But what's not included in the CIP? So what you'll see in the next couple of weeks and then in the next month or two will not include personnel additions, nor will it include our routine vehicle replacements like a, like a pickup truck or a van. Those are handled under our operational budget that year over year that council adopts and But the final document that you'll see as part of the May and June budget package, it will include all the horizontal and vertical construction projects in the city, and it will also communicate our, our system needs, as well as our regulatory compliance program, future capacity needs, and reinvestment program in our utility system. So jumping right into water demands and water projections, so using our current land use plan that the city has adopted, we anticipate that sewer will continue, or that water, rather, will continue to grow. And so our current base year as of fiscal year 26, so this current year right now, is right at six to six and a half million gallons of water daily is what the city uses. We project by 2030, that will increase 2 million gallons a day to 8.5, and then by 2050, it will increase to at least 12 million, but currently, we're targeting 14 million gallons of water per day. So essentially, in 25 years, we'll double the water based on the model and the projections. Also, during the Water and Sewer Authority of Cabarrus County master planning efforts that occurred between 2022 and 2025, WASAC's consultant reviewed all the surface lakes in the county and also in Rowan County for Kannapolis would be Kannapolis Lake. During that analysis, we had to update our 50-year drought event, which is what we use to calculate safe yields. When our original safe yield was calculated, the 2008 drought was not a drought of record yet, so we used a drought in the 50s, 1950s, and then we used the 2002 drought, and that gave us our safe yield calculation. With this updated safe yield calculation, we have to use the new drought of record, which is 2008. As part of that recalculation, our safe yield in, in Kannapolis fell significantly. Also, WASAC's consultant commissioned a bathymetric survey of Kannapolis Lake, and during that survey, they essentially, they used ultrasonic and they just kind of sound the bottom. They found that in the last 20 years, we've lost 72 million gallons of on-stream storage due to sedimentation, predominantly at the northern end, at the headwaters of the lake where Irish Buffalo Creek enters. So we have to take that into consideration, that we've lost 72 million gallons of storage capacity for drought, in drought conditions. We're kind of starting, the start of the drought with 72 million gallons less. So our current declared safe yield is 13 and a half million gallons of water per day. With the updated studies, we're at 8.2. So we have to start to plan around this reality that the, the new drought of record, the 2008 drought, does impact our ability to say, during a heavy drought, we're going to have 13 million gallons of water. Unfortunately, the study that was commissioned just shows actually that we've lost some. Now, we do have a, a plan to take a deeper dive into this. So what's our plan for water capacity in the near term? Staff is going to commission a new focus safe yield analysis and alternative study that will look just at Kannapolis. We'll be able to take a deeper dive into some of the projects that are currently funded. We have some recycling projects underway. We also have some interconnects that are currently underutilized that we could fairly easily activate and, and work through those processes to get us back to that 13 and a half. But as part of that planning effort, it was identified that we will have to move forward in the near term with future connections to the Yadkin or the Cotaba River. And then moving into sewer flows, you can see the base year is approximately four and a half to five million gallons, and then by 2030, we're estimated to be around seven million gallons of sewer. And then by 2040, we're estimated to be about nine million, eight and a half to nine million gallons of sewer. And then by 2050, we're well over nine million gallons of sewer. And so these projections assume that we have wastewater capacity to continue to distribute. If we do not have wastewater capacity to distribute, then, of course, these numbers would come down. This, this chart here, this table here, just shows what the model is predicting, so the What the hydraulic model is predicting will come from outside of the current city limits. So of the, say, 2 million gallon increase from 2030 to 2040, the model would indicate just under 200,000 would come from future growth. So this, this is a good snapshot to show the city currently has annexed significant amounts of raw land or underutilized land that can be developed within the basin itself, within the current corporate city limits. And this may be a little hard to see depending on the size of the screen, but this, this map here shows restrictions within the gravity sewer system by 2030. And so if you notice, the, the, kind of the red burgundy manholes, those circles, those are, those are calling for conveyance restrictions without any improvements. So without CIP improvements means if we don't do any improvements in that basin, by 2030, those lines will, will have constraint. Doesn't mean they're going to be, you know, backing up or overflowing, but they are definitely going to be hydraulically limited. And then by 2040, you see the, the model continues to indicate more constrictions outside of the Coldwater Basin, moving into the Royal Oaks and the unnamed tributary off of Irish Buffalo Creek. That's the creek that runs essentially from Bethpage Road all the way back behind Kannapolis Middle School, paralleling Azalea, and then ultimately to the Greenway. And then this is a, a snapshot that shows 2050. It shows some constraints starting to occur around the Brantley Midlake area. That was projected, we knew that was going to occur, that's part of our normal planning. There's a plan in place to address that over time. And then there's one minor watch list in the Rocky River Basin. That's just a watch list, likely no, no project will occur. And so moving on, within the CIP itself, you'll see there's some routine annual maintenance that is going to be programmed in, and, and that'll be for council's consideration, but those will include lift station maintenance. So those are the existing sewer pump stations that the city currently owns and maintains. Some of those pump stations are brand new, some of those pump stations are 30 years old. So over time, electrical, switch gears, pumps, motors, generators, they'll have to be replaced over time. We also have some significant dollars set aside in the CIP that, that will be presented at the upcoming budget meeting to look at sewer inspection and annual rehabilitation. And then there's recurring GIS survey and updates, basically to capture all the work that's occurred in that five-year period and, and track that throughout the life of the master plan. And so just to wrap everything up, we're, we're coming toward the end, I wanted to show some examples of what you will see as part of your, your package. This is a, a map that you'll see, it's prepared by the consultant. It's prepared by the consultant. And this will be, you'll see there's a time, so this is a 2050 project. There's an opinion of probable cost right below that with some of dollar amounts. Those are in $20, $25 amounts. And then there's always some project descriptions. So as you thumb through those, you'll see, and there's a nice map that you can follow. And essentially, this will lay out why we're recommending this project. And then this is just a close-up of a water main project. The maps will be very similar. They'll look a little different because water and sewer, they're just slightly different from a capacity standpoint. This actual snippet here is showing all phases of the water main project to better facilitate the movement of water from the water treatment plant up to North Canopus to help improve fire flows over time. And then, of course, this is an expansion project. So this is just one example where Canton Drive was annexed by the city. At the time, water was not extended. This would be a project that we could review and look at cost and say, do we want to do this? Does the community desire to connect? Things like that. And then this is just a snippet of an opinion of probable cost, included that in the presentation. Each project that will be presented will have one of these dedicated just to it so that you can see where the consultant came up with the recommendation for a budget amount. And so to sum up the capacity-related projects, there's really two options for water capacity. One is the Yadkin River Basin. So we've got a few projects that could occur within the Yadkin River Basin, rather. That would be improvements at Second Creek Pump Station. That would be our partners to the north, Salisbury Rowan Utilities, or our partners to the east at Albor, who we're already partnered with. We have the option to expand their water plant from 5 million gallons to a combined 10 million gallons in partnership with City of Concord. And so there'll be some recommendations of, over the next few decades, planned programs to respond to water capacity shortfalls. And then, of course, the Catawba River Basin, the City of Canopus currently has a contract to purchase half a million gallons of water a day from the City of Charlotte. We currently do not have the pipeline constructed for that contract, but the contract is valid and active. So there'll be some projects in there that talk about, you know, building those water lines that we've been talking about for years. And, of course, wastewater, the summary on that is we have the variable and fixed rate charge increases that would be necessary if we decided to participate in the future phases of the Rocky River Regional Wastewater Treatment Plant expansion. The two current programs that they have on their CIP are from 34 to 36 million gallons per day, or essentially a 2 million gallon per day increase, and then a 36 to 45 million gallon per day increase, or an increase of 9 million gallons per day at Rocky River. The city would pay its portion if it elected to move forward with those projects, whatever portion we agreed to, and we would work with our WASAC board members to facilitate that. We also have the potential new wastewater plant in southern Rowan County. So there is an option that the city partner or by ourselves build a new wastewater treatment facility. And then also, there's the partnership potential with Salisbury Rowan Utilities for southern Rowan County sewer flows. With that, I know that was a lot of tables with a lot of numbers, but with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the group may have.
I have one, ma'am.
Mr. Jackson?
Alex, we partnered with Concord on the Albor water line, right?
Yes, sir.
Are we maxed out on what we use there? How does that play into the consumptions that we?
Sure. So we're not maxed out, but the pipeline itself was designed to transport at least 10 million gallons a day. Our contract, though, with the town of Albor stipulates that when we hit 5 million gallons per day, that's combined Concord and Canopus purchases, to get more, we have to expand their plant. The plant just needs some concrete and steel. We have to expand the building. And so that's where we're at. If we want to get any additional flows, we're going to have to expand, partner and expand the Albor Treatment Facility. Our current usage on that, that line, is limited to 5 million. We're between four and a half to 5 million daily. That's split between Concord and Canopus, but we're essentially maxed out on what we can get from them currently.
Is there any kind of ceiling on the maximum capacity, like the Yadkin or the Catawba, that they would allow us in the future to be able, because these rivers are only so big?
Yes, sir. So the Yadkin River, our current limit is 10 million gallons per day. That's set by our IBT certificate, and our limit with the Catawba is also 10 million. So we can withdraw 10 million from the Yadkin and an additional 10 million from the Catawba. I don't believe we're going to be anywhere close to needing 10 million from the Catawba anytime soon, but we definitely do have it in our plan to start withdrawing some amount, probably closer to that half million or maybe, you know, a million in the future. But the majority, we would recommend currently coming out of the Yadkin.
I know, because you're projecting out to 2050, and I'm thinking, there's no way we'd be able to double our capacity, water capacity, if we have those limitations.
Yeah. So if we activated all the IBT certificate would allow, we definitely could achieve what's in there, but with our current pipelines, I think we would be limited. We do have an existing water main coming from the City of Salisbury into Canopus that we could get several million gallons of water a day from as well. So we definitely have a lot of options, and we'll do, I hope we'll do a good job of showing all those options in the budget retreat. But you're right, with the numbers that the model's indicating, we will have definitely a need to expand water capacity in the city.
Thank you, Alex. I appreciate it.
Ms. Dixon?
Thank you, Alex. First of all, I just want to begin by thanking this council for electing me to the WASAC Board. I attended my first meeting, and so when we talk about muddy, when you talk about Muddy Creek and the Rocky River transfer, it was like, okay, this is coming home to me. But the question I have to ask is, right now, our lake has been drained because of repairs to the spillway. And so do we have the capacity to, in the event of extreme droughts, to transfer water? And from what source would that be? And the second question is, what is the impact of the CIP on the development at Old Betis Fort Road?
Sure. Well, so the first question there is capacity during a drought. So we have a contract amount with, at Cottle Creek or Lake Howe, to transfer 2.6 million gallons of water per day. So we're currently not transferring any water from Cottle Creek to Canopus Lake because we need to keep the lake level low for the construction project. So our hope is no drought hits this in calendar year 2026, but we definitely could begin to transfer water today from Cottle Creek. All the pumps are working right. We test them regularly. Pipeline is cleared, so we could definitely start to transfer water today. We also have a pump station in Rowan County at Second Creek, and that pump station is operational currently. However, it is in the 100-year floodplain and has flooded several times, so there's a lot of rehab that has to go into it every time it floods. We can withdraw, we have a grandfathered IBT to pump up to 6 million gallons of water per day from that pump station, and that pumps into Irish Buffalo Creek, which would fill into Canopus Lake. But it is important for us to recognize that if the Irish Buffalo Creek watershed is in a drought, then the Second Creek watershed is also likely to be in drought conditions. So we probably wouldn't be able to get the full 6 million gallons of water per day, but historically, in our safe yield calculations show, we should at least expect 2 and 1/2 million gallons per day. So we definitely could start to fill Canopus Lake today from Cottle Creek, and with a little bit of TLC at Second Creek, we definitely could start pumping from there. Not this week, but it's definitely doable.
Ms. Hatchell?
Well, I want to say thank you for coming up here. You had a tough act to follow.
Yeah.
I appreciate you coming up here and explaining it, taking something very complex that a lot of us don't deal with every day and making it so we can understand and making it very clear. So I do appreciate that. You're always available for questions. I'm going to just, I just want to make sure I'm understanding it and make it really like one sentence clear. Basically, what I'm hearing is, we have ability to get the water we need, but we need to work on the pipelines?
Yes, ma'am.
That's it. Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Barry?
I just wanted to know, from what Naomi said, we must start in fiscal year 2027, or can it be put off? I'm just wondering.
I definitely think there are options that we can phase a lot of these projects. The entire CIP is not expected, nor will it be presented, that it's all or none. We definitely have options to phase some of those in. There will be requests made within the planning horizon of fiscal 2027 to 2029 that include the connection to the Catawba River. So there will be some requested projects within the next few years.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions? I'm just, is someone else? Okay.
I'm sorry. Ms. Dixon, did I answer your question?
Well, the second part of my question was about the kind of CIP applies to the Old Betis Fort Road project. Does that come?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, ma'am. So the current water and sewer serving the Old Betis Fort Road exit 65 is constructed, and that's already been financed. The CIP does recognize some future downstream improvements to the Brantley and Midlake basins just due to the pump station pumping more sewer over time. That's not something that we would anticipate being needed in the next few years, but it's definitely in the planning horizon that improvements would be needed. I think it is important to note, if we did get a heavy water and sewer user in that basin, then that may trigger improvements sooner. But if the build-out occurs, as we have laid out after consultation with the developer, the improvements are not needed in the near future.
Everybody good? Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you.
All right. Our next thing is Mr. Melton here. No, excuse me, city council comments. Any comments in council? Ms. Hatchell?
Just wanted to say one quick thing. I've kind of joked, but we were number one this last weekend, number one in Snowfall in Canopus, in the area. So with that, though, I do want to thank those different departments that were out there working, whether it was fire, whether it was the transportation department clearing our roads. I know they were out there because I had people tell me they're out there at 1:30 in the morning getting the roads cleared. And I also want to thank the citizens that checked on their neighbors, that stayed home, that, you know, maybe helped a neighbor by shoveling out a driveway or checking on some of the seniors there. And I was very impressed because of the questions that I did get about snow removal. Every time that I heard it, it was they were concerned for other neighbors, especially the seniors in their neighborhood. So it just really goes to show what kind of citizens we have in Canopus. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you. And I echo what she's saying about our support people. That was a great reaction. It really was. Anyone else? Ms. Dixon?
Yes, I have a litany of thank-yous, and I actually wrote them down so that I would not forget anybody. I want to, on behalf of the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Committee, I think the mayor will probably concur with me that I said that enough during the parade, that he, it probably still resonating in his.
You're correct.
Okay. But I want to thank our city manager, Melton, who was certainly on hand, our city clerk, Pam, who made phenomenal arrangements for us, Annette and her committee for the publicity, the custodial staff for doing just an outstanding job of preparing the facility, our parks and rec staff, our police and fire, and all of those people who came together to support the whole weekend, and it was just a stellar weekend, and you're certainly to be commended for that. Also, my second thank you is to Lee Goodman of the Canopus Fire Department. Lee goes around the city offering CPR and other information about fire prevention. And this past week, I was in a community meeting, and he, along with the Will Cannon of the American Red Cross at the Centerview Cares Community Association, has offered a fire alarm, smoke alarm detector to the community members who are interested in having smoke detectors. And on March 2nd, and the members of Community Care are here in the audience with us, March 7th, in the community, Lee Goodman and Will Cannon from American Red Cross will be distributing smoke alarms to our community members. And so I would like to just commend Lee for coordinating that event and also to ask that at some point in the future, we have Lee and Will Cannon to come make a presentation to our council so that we will be familiar with the fine job they're doing in the community and also to make the public aware of these services that are available to our citizens, our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Ms. Barry? I'm sorry. I keep getting past you. Go ahead.
No, no.
No, no. I wasn't going to get her to do the thing. I'm sorry. I was getting past you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, members of city council. I want to echo the comments that were made regarding our team's efforts during the snow and ice events. They were literally back-to-back with the ice event and then snow just days after that. But I want to commend our police-fire operations team, facilities, communications, et cetera, as well as our community partners in Rowan and Cabarrus County. We had weekly calls where we were working together collaboratively as a team to make sure that the citizens of Canopus were safe. So I just can't say enough about the extraordinary job that our team did during those two events to make sure that our citizens were safe. And if you can imagine when, as Councilwoman Hatchell mentioned, out having to move 14 and 1/2 inches of snow from the roads so that we can ensure that trash and recycling and your other services are available to you, it was a tremendous effort for those guys working around the clock to be able to do that, and our fire and police teams making sure that our citizens were safe during this timeframe, people that were stuck out on roads going out to make sure that they could get back home safely. So I commend all of my team members for the extraordinary job. We couldn't have done it without you, and thank you for your hard work and effort. The other item that I wanted to mention, all of you, that I did share this in an email with you, but please, when you have an opportunity, if you would thank Congressman Addison McDowell's office, we were able to secure $1.5 million in US NCDOT dollars that will help us to be able to improve the intersection of Oakwood Avenue and Rogers Lake Road. If you've been on that road before and you see the buses and that turn, as you're headed westward, it is somewhat of a challenge. So this will significantly improve that. We've done work, excuse me, I say to the east, not west, but the section that's to the west, we've already improved. We did that with a CDBG project, or excuse me, CMAC project, but this will help improve that intersection where it's much safer. There'll be some signalization and drainage work as well as widening and turn lanes. So it'll be much improved, but just wanted to share that with the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now, Ms. Barry, can you get us into closed session?
I sure will. Motion to enter into closed session pursuant to NCGS 143-318-11A3 to consult with an attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege and GS 143-318-11A4 for discussing matters relating to the location or expansion of industries or businesses in the area.
Is there a second? Mr. Payne, all in favor? We're now in closed session. Thank you, everybody, for coming. We were part of a historic night here. I really believe that. So thank you for coming.